We call this meeting to order. We all stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mr. Ficassi?
We also have a moment of silence. We just lost Floyd Rass, who used to be a policeman, sergeant here in the city of Southfield, and Donald Mason, who used to be administrative finance in the city. Just lost them this last couple of weeks.
And Roy Bell, too?
Also.
I'm sorry, and Roy Bell, who is on one of the paneling positions.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Can we could have a moment of silence?
Yes, I totally agree. Can we please have a moment of silence for those who have passed that have served the city well? Thank you.
Thank you.
As we move into the meeting, we have three sets of meeting minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes for January 22nd, 2019.
Support.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Morris and supported by Councilman Brightwell that we approve the meeting minutes of January 22nd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 4th, 2019.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Morris, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 4th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 11th, 2019.
Support.
It's moved by Councilwoman Morris and supported by Councilwoman Taylor that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 11th.
Support.
It's moved by Councilwoman Morris and supported by Councilwoman Taylor that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 11th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President?
All approved, yes. Mr. Fraser.
Can I ask, I'd like to ask one question about the January 22nd.
Sure.
And it has nothing to do with any problems or anything. But in that, we said that we would delay the billing for the people that were federal employees that were being furloughed.
That's correct.
Do you, does anyone know how many we had here in South, if we had any in Southfield that came in and applied?
Sure. Mr. Zorn, can you speak to that, please?
I don't know that. We can get that answer.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I do not know the answer to the question. We can get the information?
I would've asked earlier, but I don't even know who to ask.
I'm gonna have to do, ask some questions myself.
And just as, since we're talking about the topic, too, as with the resolution, we did move forward on that issue, will that, is that something in perpetuity? Will that continue on if there's ever any furloughs in the future? I'm not, I wasn't clear on that part, and I just thought about it actually now. Will we continue to do that just automatically?
We would, I would make, I would like to state that we are going to address each furlough as it happens, and good Lord willing, there won't be too many, but I think that's a very naive statement.
Yep.
So, we, the longevity of the last furlough, that just a little over three weeks was our driver on that, so I think any additional furloughs, we would speak to.
Okay. So, we'll take it one, one furlough at a time. Hopefully, there won't be any more. Right. That's, that's the hope. All right, very good. Thank you. Consent agenda, I'll take a motion to approve. So moved?
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fraser and supported by Mr. Madalvan that we approve the consent agenda items.
As amended.
As amended at our previous study session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. There are no public carings, but we do have one site plan. Mr. Crowe?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our site plan is PSP 18-0013. Site plan review request of Keith Russo, The Collaborative, on behalf of the owner, Lawrence Tech University. For Phase 3 of the LTU Stadium Development Plan, to include permanent seating with a press box, concessions, lockers, restroom, pedestrian walkways, ticket booth, and expanded parking lot of property located at 21000 West 10 Mile. Council has seen this at previous study sessions. This is the total campus site, and the stadium, Phase 3 improvements are right here on the point. The site is currently zoned Education/Research Office. This is the existing conditions of the site. Phase 1 and Phase 2 have been completed, and there's a bifurcated Phase 3 that's being proposed tonight for your consideration. Existing conditions on the field. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to representatives of Lawrence Tech to make an introductory statement to go over their vision plan, the specifics of Phase 3 A and B, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at that time.
Thank you, Terry. Kevin Finn, Lawrence Technological University, 21,000 West 10 Mile Road.
My name is Keith Russo from The Collaborative. We're at 206 South Main, Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Okay, so, we'll walk you through our presentation, and this is in two different phases, as, you know, with other projects at the university, it's often based on when philanthropy happens. We don't use student tuition dollars to fund us, so we received a portion, but we're gonna show you what we're working towards at large school, and then what we're working for for this year. This would be the facility master plan right here. It would have a permanent grandstand that was last year rental bleachers on the, what we call our home side, or the west side of the field. It would have a building that would be housing like the weight facilities, as well as locker rooms, and then it would have seats for the visitors on the other side. Right now, we're talking about this right here. That would be connecting to the pathway that's gonna happen this year along Northwestern Highway for pedestrians, and it will lead to two different entrances for people to the field. We found this year the most common entry was off of 10 Miles, people walking across from our parking lots and stuff, but they would have that option with the walkway. We're looking at permanent seating for 3,000 people. It'll be a little bit under that, actually. A permanent two-story press box, which is the overall, that's not something we're looking at this year, and ticket booths, concession stands, restrooms, and locker rooms. This is just to go over our path to the field. Last year, the most common was along 10 Mile. Students, parents would park in our main lots, often tailgating or catching up with friends and stuff, and then walking over from the housing units. And this just goes over our parking somewhere, so you see that we have ample parking, basically, and we found out last year, even in our first game, which had attendance of around 4,000, we still had parking available. We're seeing less students bring cars to campus, number one, and secondly, the other aspect of it was games on Saturdays, not many classes on Saturdays, so there's parking spaces available. Again, we go back over path. Last year, we worked with the Southfield Police for traffic concerns and stuff, which I didn't see really any issues with during the games last year. It worked really well having the Southfield Police there, averted problems, and we'll continue that this year, just made our lives easier on campus with other issues that sometimes arise that you could not anticipate, but having our Southfield Police there was great.
The blue line represents the Northwestern?
Yes, I'm sorry. That blue line represents the pathway that'll be done this summer. As you know, we work on the planning office on that, and that will allow people to go along Northwestern and come to that other entry as well. Okay, so this is what we're really focused on this year for Phase 3A features, and that's permanent west seating on the home side for 2,150, and then temporary seating like we had last year behind the south end zone, and that was another 552 seats. Existing temporary box, if you came out to one of our games last year, it's a one-story press box that we're gonna use again this year. That just houses the coaches when they're calling plays, and the announcers, and scoreboard operator, things like that. Then we're also looking to build the foundations for when we receive the philanthropy, that we can have it built in a way, kinda like a Lego set is how I like to put it, where we can, we have it set up in a way that when we have the money for locker rooms, we're not having to go back and reconstruct, we're just building on to what we had. Go ahead, Keith.
So, I guess just to clarify that piece, so the full build-out, Lawrence Tech doesn't have all the money for all of Phase 3. Phase 3A, what we'd like to do is, the long-term vision is to put locker rooms and restrooms and other facilities below the bleachers. Can't afford to do that now, but the bleachers are going to go up in this phase, so the most economical approach is at least put the foundations in for those buildings now, since foundations are going in for the bleachers, and it won't be very easy to get access to that site after the bleachers are up, get cranes and, you know, backhoes and whatever it takes to build it. So, we're trying to get some of that part done now, and that's why we suggest doing the foundations at this point.
And when we receive more philanthropy, Phase 3B would be the permanent seating to extend it out to 3,000, removing the temporary bleachers, which are those trailers, permanent northeast ticket box, the lockers being built, also the permanent concrete walkway to the stadium amenities and stuff. Actually, we're doing that in this phase, all the walkway.
Correct.
Yeah, so we show that in Phase 3B, that's actually happened in Phase 3A, based on feedback that we had received at the planning department and working with Terry on that. This would just show you kinda what it looks like underneath the bleachers when we are able to put those locker rooms in place, also places for the officials, always important in taping of knees and all that stuff that happened before athletic events. This is what it'll look like next, this summer, or this fall, I should say. And you see that we have a combination of seats, bleachers, and then also benches. And then you see where that, the existing press box we placed on that platform there. And eventually, is what we see it looking like with the two-story press box, which will allow like private suites, but also just more room for the coaches, separating them. Coaches are competitive to do, teams, you want them to have space between each other, so if they don't feel like one's selling the other one's plays. And then you see what it would look like this fall from behind, but eventually, it will look like that, more of a classic college look with a brick and so on. Look forward to that. And this is kind of the conceptual schedule. So, where we're at right now is working on that Phase 3A, the bleachers, and then working on those foundations, and then the walkways, really kinda setting it up. Earlier today, Terry had given me a call, and then Councilman Yosel gave me a chance to talk to some of our residents. There are some concerns with how loud the PA system and music was. To be honest, when I'm at a game, it's hard for me, I'm just focusing on student behaviors, but what we, I've agreed on, we won't be using that sound system until now, until about August, because we'll be hopefully doing construction, but in July, we'll have it set up back up. I'm gonna go out to the residents, have my staff run for me, see how loud they did hear it, and we'll make adjustments. We don't wanna make people uncomfortable. I, myself, even live, when I'm not at Lawrence Tech, I live out by Oak University in Meadowbrook Theater, so I've had the same concern with loud concerts and stuff that you sometimes hear that you don't wanna hear at that point. The other adjustments we did already make with our staff, they were playing at times that it should not have been playing, and we've corrected that, but we'll, I'll come up to your residents and hear how it is, and we'll make the adjustments with you. Don't wanna inconvenience our neighbors, we just want you to come to a game, actually, if you have an interest, so. I think that wraps up my comments right now.
So, if I could just piggyback, just, I think there wasn't completely clear that in the past, there was some inner marrow teams playing out late at night, and they've scaled back the hours that they're available to play, and some of that was just loud music being played by the kids out there. Until they get the full system operating, there's decimal levels that they have to follow. Most of their games are Saturday afternoon, they'll be making some adjustments. We occasionally got a call or two about the lighting, which they worked with their stadium lights to make sure that those lights are adjusted, and it's just a little bit of a process, but they're receptive to trying to work with the city and the neighbors to be good neighbors.
Definitely.
So, tonight is for final site plan approval for Phases A and B. With Phase 3A, their goal is to have it completed in time for the fall football season, which is September 7th. Also, as the council knows, the city, in partnership with Lawrence Tech, received a TAP grant, and that will be under construction at the same time with the completion of 10-foot wide pathway along Northwestern Highway by mid to late August. So, those two things should, should happen at the same, concurrently with each other and be completed before the students come back to school, and that would alleviate a lot of the circulation issues that they saw in their first year.
Mr. Brightwell?
Kevin, I've never tried to miss opportunity to praise Lawrence Tech. Again, you guys have done a fantastic job over there. The progress and the growth has been astronomical, and when I talk to some hotelers and some retailers, they're really glad that you guys are here in town and that you're growing and you're expanding and doing, doing all the good things that you're currently doing. And I pray I brought this question up to the finance committee. The crossing from 10 Mile to the other side, over where the stadium is, when people park here, you get over there, is that lighting sufficient? Because I recall when Michigan Municipal League had a conference in Grand Rapids, and it probably wasn't, it was the city that was quite close to Grand Rapids. We stayed on a college campus. They had a very robust crossing system for the students. This thing just lit up and you thought it was Halloween or New Year's Eve when someone wanted to cross.
Right.
Is that a crossing light, a traffic light, that's sufficient for the, foot traffic might be crossing the street there on 10 Mile?
I think yes, personally. When we had our larger events, we did have Southfield Police there to assist us in our campus safety, and they were monitoring it, so I felt that if we had an issue, they would have pointed it out to us, right? But, you know, I guess that's the best I can answer right now.
If I could, if I could through the chair?
Sure.
Just for clarification, there's no dedicated spectator parking on the south side of 10 Mile?
Oh, no.
And so, the majority, 100% of the parking will be on the north side, there's no need to cross 10 Mile. However, there is a dorm on the south side, and there is a traffic light with a dedicated crosswalk where students do cross.
Yeah.
But there, but there are no spectator visitor parking on the south side of 10 Mile, even during game events?
We're the loudest most immediately south of us. The Southfield Police blocked, put their cars blocked, so it wasn't an access point for people that did wanna park there.
Yeah, I'm assuming, I take your word that there's no issue. I just, when they had the grand opening, the first game, they directed me to try to park over there on the, I guess, the south side of where that dorm is, and I had to cross 10 Mile to get to the stadium. But if you, it's just a question.
Sure.
I have a vivid memory of this robust traffic signal on a college campus up near Grand Rapids, and it seemed like it was very fast, and if you ignore that, you're obviously deaf, dumb, and happy or something, you know? So, okay, but it's just a curiosity, it's nothing.
We'll keep our eyes on it.
And again, I think through the chair, that new 10-foot pathway along Northwestern is gonna relieve a lot of that pedestrian traffic that worked its way down and across 10 Mile.
Okay.
Along 10 Mile, not across 10 Mile, right? I mean, even people that were coming from lots D and C were staying on the north side of 10 Mile.
That's correct.
Councilwoman Morris?
Okay, a couple of questions. There is seating on the east side of the field. Bleachers?
There, during games, there isn't really. There is some old bleachers that are there, they're not being used during games because it's too close to the access points to the visiting teams.
So, those, so those are temporary?
Yeah.
So, those will be gone?
They were like the, yeah, they were like the original bleachers when we used to have, just a game of like 200 people there, like for soccer or something, right? We, in the future, in this phase, we look at building a permanent grandstand aside, a smaller one, but no, there's not.
Okay.
They would use the south end zone seats this year.
So, the only seating will be the permanent seating?
Permanent, and then the south end zone, if Terry, if you could take us to that, right there, yes. And that, we had seating there last year.
The first year, you did have some seating.
We did, that is correct.
But now, it'll be here, and then the permanent one's here.
Okay.
Long-term, you might have some seating.
Correct, yeah.
Your long-term vision, not in this phase.
That's correct.
So, what's the total numbers on the seating? How many?
2,800.
2,800?
Yeah, maybe off by about 25, but 2,800's a safe number.
The calculations for the parking that show the, I believe it's a 42 parking space surplus, assume 3,000, so even, even in this phase, there probably won't be 3,000 until they, till they build that permanent visitor side, that east side bleacher system. And if they go beyond, you know, I don't, I don't know what the number is, we've always talked about 4,000. At that point, parking will need to be addressed, but there's a certain number somewhere between, I don't know, 500 on that side to 700, where they, they could build that out and still would show a parking surplus, essentially.
Not to get too much into that detail, but this year, one thing that's gonna help is by both the permanent grandstand, you have numbered bleachers and seats, so like last year, when it was rental and it wasn't numbered, you could take as much space as you really wanted to. Now, we can, well, you know exactly where you're sitting when you come to the games and stuff, and know what your space is.
Okay.
And if I could just add, there are now 1,000 students living on campus, so about 25% of your total, full-time equivalent population, lives on campus and can walk to the game as opposed to drive.
Okay. And so, how many of the individual seats are within the bleachers? Because I'm assuming those are gonna...
Seats and bleachers?
Those are gonna be a price point for those, right?
Yeah, there is.
Okay, so, how many of those are?
It's, it's just under 2,400 is the current design.
No, are you saying seats and bleachers?
I'm asking about the seats, how many seats?
It's around 300 are either benches or seats.
Okay.
So, still the majority is benches or bleachers, but those, yeah, the 300, yes, those are a little higher in cost, I'll be.
Okay, just one more question. So, the new walking path?
Yes.
Can you just bring that back up again? I'm just wondering, so, are we anticipating that, because currently, people are parking right there now, so are we anticipating that students are gonna be walking from other parts of the campus?
Yeah, from the north, the north end where it says Lot C. That's their largest parking area, and that's the one that typically is more, there's more spaces available. So, the Lots C and D, especially on weekends, are mostly gonna be free. People will be directed to park there, and they'll have a shuttle available for elderly or persons with disability, but I would see a good portion of the students and the spectators using that yellow line and coming right down Northwestern Highway into the stadium, and then they'll still have Lots A and C for tailgating, which will draw a number of people. But last year, everybody had to flow through Lots A and G, and then along 10 Mile to get into the stadium. They'll have two access points or ticket booths into the stadium when it's completed. So, that'll, that'll take a lot of relief off of 10 Mile.
Yeah, I guess there's a lot of lines and a lot of different colors on the screen, so like, just to be clear, so the red dash lines represent walking paths to the stadium. You see that, obviously, everybody in Lots A and G will go along 10 Mile to the stadium, but still have the option to park in Lots D and C and still walk counterclockwise that way. Now, with the new path along Northwestern Highway, they will be able to enter the stadium along that blue dash line, walk along Northwestern, enter from that side. There'll be a temporary, you know, ticket booth or temporary gate there to handle people coming from that way. The yellow line represents that loop that Terry was talking about, and it goes counterclockwise, stops in the small lot, which is handicap accessible, and then continues its loop around and just does that really the duration of the pregame and postgame.
Thank you.
Mr. Madalvan?
Yes, thank you. With the permanent seating that you're building on the, on the diagram you showed us, it had some blue color in the middle, is that going to be there, or will it spell out LTU? How is that going to be worked out?
It's not spelling out LTU, but it is blue, we're going with color-wise, our royal blue, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could, I mean, some of the smaller schools, you pay, you can pay an upgrade, and they'll put out the seats with backs on the bleachers. This will be a permanent version of that, and you may even decide to go to those temporary ones where you get an upgrade with your season ticket, and those seats will be out there for you in your designated spot.
Actually, we'll, what we'll probably do, Terry, on that, a lot of colleges do this now, if you wanna rent like a cushion, just to make the bleachers, you rent it that day, you pay $5, and you just leave it and you go, and then we collect them afterwards. That's the system we're looking to go to. That's what most colleges are doing now.
Yeah, I just thought it'd be nice if you're driving down Northwestern, you see LTU built into the bleachers, but maybe on Phase 4.
We, I mean, we did talk a lot with the architect and the administration, this is no different than Wayne State, where the stadium becomes the billboard.
Right.
And you don't necessarily have to have extra signage, so some of the things that'll come in Phase 4 are more architectural embellishments to make the stadium more prominent from Northwestern Highway.
Okay, thank you.
In a tasteful way.
You have the comments, council? Well, I think the, we've seen, we've seen your presentation as through, as the phases have gone along, and I think that we're all probably would be in agreement that we're happy with what LTU's doing in our city. I know there were a couple residents, and I'm glad you addressed that piece, that did have some concerns, and unfortunately, we won't have the time for them to speak at this moment, but if they wish to be acknowledged under communications, we'll let them come back at that time. But at this point, we've seen the site plan. Council?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP 18-0013.
It's been moved by Mr. Madalvan, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve site plan PSP 18-0013. Are there any questions or concerns or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, site plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finn and the company. We appreciate you guys. All right, so, moving along, we'll go to our communications portion of the meeting. Our first request for recognition is Mrs. Sonia Simpson Gardner. She is available today, I'm not sure.
I thought I saw her.
Sonia Simpson Gardner.
She comes.
Okay. So, we do have our clock working again today, so we, again, as always, we just ask you to give your name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay.
All righty.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone. Sonia Simpson Gardner, coming to you guys again, and I've already told you that I will continue to come to you. Thought I would do a little homework, because nothing is happening. I'm still having all of the same issues, so I thought I would do, or provide, you guys with a little information. I decided to pull the Southfield Charter and look into the Charter to see what can be done about my situation. Originally, when I came to you, I told you that my house was broken into in June of 2016. Nothing has happened. I have filed numerous police reports, nothing has happened. I have attempted to do any and everything that I possibly can, nothing has happened. I filed a federal lawsuit stating that the Southfield Police Department does not have an internal affairs department, at least not one that I can find. I've Googled one, I've attempted to talk to the Southfield Police Department to find their internal affairs department, nothing has happened. That case number is 17-10636. Feel free to look it up. The only thing that happened with my case was, it was dismissed, and if you look it up, you'll only find that I attempted to take the Southfield Police Department to court stating that they don't have an internal affairs department, and my case was found to be frivolous, and that's not fair to me. So, I decided to look at the Charter, and I've noticed that under Section 14, I mean, Section 4.17, the city council has the rights to investigate the Southfield Police Department or any department that's located in the city of Southfield, so I am asking that the city council department look into what the police department is doing. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention that you guys have been sworn in, and you've taken an oath. Under Section 11.2, that oath tells you that you are supposed to listen to the citizens and listen to what it is that I'm saying. I'm not crazy, and I'm not making this up. I didn't make up 30 police reports that I filed against the police department. I'm not telling you that your police department is corrupt. I'm letting you know that your police department is corrupt, that my civil rights have been violated, and I've already told you that I've acted as a mother bear. Now, I'm going to act as an educated African-American woman who is exercising her rights. Now I'm going to act as an educated African-American woman who is exercising her rights. I will continue to come before the City Council and do any and everything that I can to represent my rights. I feel that it's unfair that we live in a city that is not recognizing the fact that your Police Department is violating the rights of its citizens. If I lived in Detroit, my rights would be recognized and someone will do something, would do something about this. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Keith Harris. Is Keith Harris available? All right, if not, we'll move to our next recognition for request, which is Stacy Jackson. Stacy Jackson here. All right, next we'll move to our next request, Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, Council. Pamela Gerald, P O Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I just wanna say that Southfield has an outstanding Police Department. We are one of the best trained Police Departments in the United States. Does that mean that the Police Department is perfect, but they do a lot of things absolutely correct? And I've only been in the city for about thirty-six years. I wanted to talk about the possibility of City Council creating an ordinance that would prohibit campaign signs. This last twenty eighteen election, it was a hot mess when it came to campaign signs. We had signs that were stepped on, that were bent. We had campaign signs where the candidate's cardboard was pulled off and another candidate's cardboard was put on top. And I have never seen anything like this. I mean, it was bad a few years ago, but not like a hot mess like it was this past election. So what I'm proposing is that this ordinance prohibits any campaign signs in the twenty-six point six or point three square miles of the city. That means that you have to campaign on who you are, your political character, and your platform, and your visibility to the residents. Now why am I asking that? Everybody that runs for office, you go to the city clerk's office and you get a packet. And in that packet, it explains everything. It, it talks to you about signs, the do's and don'ts about where to put signs, you don't put the signs in the right way. And ninety percent of the time, the volunteers don't adhere to what the rule is. And you have signs all over the place. But after a while, when you've got twenty signs on one corner at the gas station, it looks trifling. It looks nasty, it looks dirty, it looks like it's just garbage. And then after the election, most of the candidates don't even go back and get the signs. So why don't you consider introducing an ordinance that would prohibit campaign signs anywhere in the city of Southfield? And if you need some help with the language, I'd be glad to offer my free services as an activist, as a volunteer, and co-founder of the Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Gerard Mullin.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Mr. Chairman, I was pleased to read in the Southfield Sum, the February fourteenth issue, that this city has finally decided to take action, legal action against Sean Stafford, the slumlord who owns the Sapphire Apartments. The issue with the Sapphire is this. Mr. Sapphire doesn't have enough money to make the necessary repairs to his property. But, and listen closely, Mr. Sapphire has just enough money to fill the campaign coffers of four members of this City Council. Yes, four council members, just enough to guarantee favorable legislation for Mr. Stafford. For example, Council voted to place Mr. Stafford on the D D A, the Downtown Development Authority. Also, Council voted to give Mr. Stafford a tax abatement for his Sapphire Apartments. If you recall, the Sapphire first became a major news item on January the fifth, twenty eighteen, when all the residents at the Sapphire had to be evacuated to local hotels because the furnace had failed and the water pipes had broken, thus causing major flooding. And three days later, after the great flood, angry displaced Sapphire residents flooded the January eighth City Council meeting, asking this Council in vain for Council's help. And since that fateful January eighth Council meeting, a lot has happened at the Sapphire. For instance, on May thirtieth, the water pipes broke again, causing major flooding again, along with the air conditioning failing. And still, this city, this Council failed, failed again to take any legal action until now to help the residents of the Sapphire. And finally, I'd like to say something positive for a change, yes, positive, about this Council. This Council is the best. Yes, the very best. The best damn Council that money can buy. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next request for recognition is Harold Hill.
I'd like to keep this a little lighter in the area. Compared to that, um, my name is Harold Hill, two two three hundred Seminole Street, Southfield, Michigan. Um, my initial request was to talk about ADA compliance. I talked to Reverend Taddy, a pastor in Detroit, but he has a lot of parishioners here in Southfield, and he said that ADA compliance was an issue because we do have some great sidewalks, where there are sidewalks, there's great sidewalks, and they have the little ramps so that people can get up the ramps with, uh, wheelchairs and scooters. That's a good thing. But this winter has been, well, riddled with a lot of ice and snow, and some of the streets, the side streets have been cleaned, but those ADA ramp compliances, you know, they haven't been cleaned. So it makes it difficult. People are getting out to exercise more, and they mentioned that part, so I just wanted to put that out there to the right department, um, such as Nine Mile. There's a bridge where they have a little bridge over between Beechwood and Inkster Road, and so that little bridge area, they said, is not clean, so people are jogging. They jog up and down there all the time. I, I drive past there. It's a little cold for me, but hey, people are getting out, so just wanted to pack, put out, out there. And earlier, uh, Council President Teed went up for me and talked about the possible closure of Beechwood Golf Course. And I brought that to light because it is a jewel of our city, and I'm glad to hear that a lot of people are with me on this. They do not want it to close, so I'm with them on that part. And I gotta thank Terry Fields for bringing that to light, um, because it was a rumor at one time, but return on investment is important. And I think every, uh, department should be solvent, but then again, sometimes it's more than just the department costs. So I wanted to let you know that return on investment is weather-driven for golf. I know a lot of people don't care about golf, and that's fine. That's just one avenue, one asset for, for exercise that people can utilize. The environment's getting a little bit older, um, baby boomers are getting a little older, so it may be something that they wanna do. Uh, weather plays a big part, and the economy's getting better. The economy's getting better because I guess we have the lowest unemployment rate, what, four percent now? So more people white play more golf. So you might see insurgents, and with the right marketing, hey, we can save our jewel. So I just wanted to pass that along to you. Thank you for presenting that information to us, because I did hear it and I'm glad to hear the city of Southfield's addressing it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, um, next request for recognition is Toby Rhodes.
Toby Rhodes, one seven zero zero one, New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, uh, two four eight five six nine seven one eight nine. Uh, first thing I wanna say is, um, if you're looking for someone to take care of an elderly parent, do not use Optimal Care. They are trash out of Bingham Farms, total garbage. Second thing I wanted to talk about was the Sapphire. Sapphire used to be a five-star rated apartment complex in two thousand and fifteen. By two thousand and sixteen, it was a one-star rated apartment complex. That was the first full year that Northland closed. Now, the third thing I wanna talk about, my family's been in this country since the very beginning. I'm going all the way back to the beginning. I'm a foundational, legacy, multi-generational American. But in Southfield, I'm treated like I'm some filthy immigrant, like I'm trash. I'm not treated like an American with American rights. I'm treated like I'm a nobody. Now, why is that? I'll tell you why. Because it's Zionist garbage. Zionists, filthy scumbag, freeloading trash, like this homosexual scumbag. I go to vote as an American, lived in this city for thirty years. My grandfather died here. That homosexual piece of trash, he's a New York sissy. He's not even from Michigan. I grew up in Michigan. I've gone to school in Michigan, my whole life has been in Michigan. And that trash and the Police Department, they believe this New York sissy over me. And I get thrown in jail for going to vote. They crossed the line. And the thing about this Zionist garbage, they hate America, they hate Americans. Why? Because foundation Americans have something they will never have. We have a legacy here, we have, uh, sacrifice here. We didn't come here like some freeloading scumbag looking for the come up. We actually went through the bad times. We went through Jim Crow, we went through the Depression, we went through mass incarceration. We didn't come over here trying to steal from everybody and leech off of everybody. See, these Zionists scum, their loyalty is to Israel. He, he literally couldn't get a American judge at forty-sixth District Court to help him attack me. So he got a, another filthy Zionist piece of trash who don't even live in Southfield to attack me. See, Zionists, scumbags stick together. And how did that Zionist judge, I mean, scumbag calling himself a judge, get that job? Another Zionist, Rick Snyder. And what did that Zionist do? He destroyed Flint, he poisoned a whole city. These Zionists destroy American cities one by one, and now they're trying to destroy Southfield. We see it with Northland. As long as that sissy devil is around, Northland will always be a failure. And he will destroy Southfield until he can get the Americans out and bring in Zionist garbage to replace us. And until we get rid of this Zionist trash, American citizenship won't mean anything, which is what these Zionist devils want. They don't, cause as long as we have American citizenship, we have something they can never buy, they can never steal from us. And that's why I've been able to withstand nine years attacked by this vicious scum.
If, uh, either Ken Cabell or Christian Wanba are still here and would like to be recognized as regarding to the Lawrence Tech issue, I will allow you opportunity to speak. If you'd like to come up, you will, uh, have three minutes to speak to your concerns.
Yes, I'm Reverend Kenneth Cable, uh, two four two seven five Norwood Drive. Do appreciate, didn't realize just how wonderful this new stadium is going to be and the improvements, and I will have to say a lot for that. Our concern was the, as, as was addressed, was the volume at all times of the day of coming from the, uh, the speakers there. On Norwood Drive, we're, I guess, due south of that, about, about a half a mile probably, coming, uh, through mostly trees, but, um, it was just too loud. Even sitting inside with the windows closed, it was too loud. Uh, so we're happy, we'll be very happy that, that this is addressed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Christian Wanba, two four two seven one, Norwood Drive West, four eight zero seven five. I'm a professor at Wayne County Community College, I teach microbiology there, and I've lived in Southfield since, uh, two thousand and four, when the Norwood area were having new constructions there. My neighbor, uh, Ken, who just spoke, and many other neighbors we spoke to, do have the concern of the noise level that permeates and penetrates across from Lawrence Tech to our neighborhood, which is that Norwood Drive area. We're not against further development, and we appreciate development. We're not against students, I teach students at DeWitt Institutions. But what we want the Council to do is not to give them a blanket approval, but make a demand that they seek a technology that could reduce the noise level so that neighbors in the, uh, Norwood area will not, uh, experience such level of noise pollution when there is activity there. I think if you make that expectation and demand on them being Lawrence Technological Institute, they will find a technology to ensure that neighbors in the Norwood Drive area and the other areas of that particular stadium will enjoy a peaceful, maybe Saturday morning, Saturday evening, or any evening of their property down there. It's an appeal, and I'm sure if you put that into consideration and actually make that demand of them, they will find a technology to reduce the noise level and ensure that we are not experiencing noise pollution, pay the ordinance of the city of Southfield. Thank you very much, and I appreciate what you do. It's my first time coming here, you won't see me often, but when there's a need like this, I'll come to speak on behalf of myself and my neighbors who couldn't be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you. And, uh, I, I hope that by the presentation we had today, that you see that Lawrence Tech is looking to be good neighbors to us all. So I think that, uh, between yourselves, the Council, and the, and the college, uh, we're gonna work at our best to make sure that that happens for you all, okay? Mr. Keeler, uh, I will recognize you as well, it's even fast to speak for a moment today, too. And again, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I'm trying to understand, since I'm part of Murphy Orchard, and Lawrence Tech is part of Murphy Orchard, how come Lawrence Tech gets to keep building things on the same plot of land I live on with sewer lines? They can build on Circle Drive with sewer lines, but Circle Drive does not have a sewer line. The stadium, you're gonna build it, you're gonna put in a sewer line. How come we don't have one? This is a sa-, if it's a different plot of land, okay, no problem. But same plot of land, same streets, same everything, you say yes, 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 and yes to Lawrence Tech. But somehow, you forget about, about us? Or do residents count?
Thank you. That concludes the communications portion of the meeting for this evening. Council, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to direct it to the administrator, if I could. Fred, uh, some of the construction sites that are not completed because of the weather, um, and I don't see too many people working on those, uh, at this particular time. My concern is that we've just approved some construction of Southfield two thousand and nineteen, uh, and, um, I'm just wondering about the sequence of events it's gonna take for the construction to end and for the new construction having go out for bids and, and to be designed and to be constructed. If the new ones that have been approved for two thousand and nineteen will not be completed in time because of the weather, we're gonna get a late start the way the weather is presently of finishing last year's jobs. And I just wonder if there's gonna be enough contractors out there to, to start new construction as well as people who are gonna be inspecting these projects are gonna be all over the place. So my real concern is that, that we may have to look at the time that we have allowed construction to take place, and if they cannot know when they- construction to take place, and if they cannot know when they submit their bids, that they know they'll have a heavy fine if they don't get it done in a year. Because it's going to take somebody who does not have a job rolling to come in and get these jobs bid, designed and, and constructed. And ones that are here, I just keep going over them, and they seem like they're not in any way completed. They're rough, they're not finished, they got barricades all over the place, they got them laid down, some are right on the curbs of streets, there's nobody taking care of that. And it's not like Southfield allowed in the past, and I don't know where they're coming from, they're not looking at the jobs and at least removing some of those broken barricades that are laying on the curbs and all over the place. So I just raised the point that I don't believe that with the ones that we approved can be completed in 2019. Maybe some of the small ones, but some of the large ones are going to really be affected, especially if there's sewer work that's going to have to be done before the concrete or asphalt is linked.
I'd like to have the city engineer address that, and we can schedule...
I can't hear you, Fred.
I'd like to have the city engineer address those questions. We can schedule something as perhaps as soon as the March Committee of the whole. You were asking and making a statement that is very accurate. A lot of construction projects across this state were not completed because of the four-to-five-week shutdown we had in the construction trade. We have jobs that are, that will be bid by the state on their timeline and their schedule, but there is concern about capacity in this state in general to handle the additional monies that were passed in the, with the last legislature, as well as the volume of work. But I, I can ask our consulting engineers, as well as the city's engineers, engineer to speak to Southfield specifically. We do have projects that have federal funds tied for construction year 2019 that are supposed to be bid out in 2019, and we are working around some of those deadlines, but you're hitting and asking a question throughout the state, there was lots of work left uncompleted because of that five-week delay.
Fred, when you come off the expressway onto the ramp, onto coming to Evergreen Road, the asphalt one, right where the seam is, there's a big hole. So I just see that, that it's not our fault, but those who have been doing construction, they are not monitoring the job even to kind of fill out things that need to be touched up so that we can continue having at least a road that we can drive on. And it's a, it's one that could probably pull a hubcap off or ruin a tire.
That is an example of one of those jobs that only the first course was put down, it is not complete, and because of the construction delay.
Yeah, but there's a hole right where the seam is, as you come off into Evergreen Road, and I just can't believe that these guys are on the job and, and expect everybody to come off the expressway and onto the ramp, onto Evergreen Road, to keep hitting it. It hits your left wheel pretty solid.
Okay. All right. Madam Prouttill.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to Southfield's own Cable fifteen, Chris Campbell. He was appointed Communication Chair of One Hundred Black Men of Greater Detroit, the city's premier mentoring organization. Next, I also want to send a shout out to Justin Beck. There was an incident with the weather here about five or six, maybe eight days ago, and there was about seven hundred employees that were unable to get in and out of a building. A call was made, Justin sent a truck out, I think in about forty-five minutes, half hour to forty-five minutes, and everybody was able to maneuver in and out of the complex with no problems, and everybody was thanking the city of Southfield and Justin Beck. So I personally wanted to say thank you for that. I also want to remind us all that this is Black History Month, and kudos to the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the library. Parks and Rec put on some excellent programs that have been very well attended, and you still have time to come out to a few this week. We have some things still going on. I didn't bring the program in front of me, but I want everybody to know that a lot of time was spent on this, a lot of work went into the programming and bringing quality vendors to the city of Southfield, so please take advantage of it. And if you haven't taken the time to go to the library, please go over to the library and see the portraits that they have put up for Black History, starting from the first floor all the way up to the third floor. They recognize the history from the city of Southfield that we have for Black History, people such as Barbara Tally, our own Sharika Hawkins, we have John Menefee. We have so many portraits in explaining who they are and what they are. It'll just take, take you a few minutes to go through, but you will be so enriched by what you see. It's a wonderful display of some of the talent that we have here in the city of Southfield, some of the people that have contributed to the Southfield history. So again, this is Black History Month, we have the last week going on, and there's a lot of things happening, both at the Parks and Rec Department and at the library. So I hope you take the time to go through and see some of the work that everybody has put in, a whole lot of work and effort to prepare for all of us, so thank you.
Councilwoman Morris.
Yes, and I would like to echo the comments, Councilwoman Taylor made. I did attend the Black History event at the Pavilion, and it was awesome. It was really enriching to take part in the mobile Black History Museum that was there and to hear a lot of the different speakers that were present. I also want to say something about a community event that I attended on February fifteenth at the World Medical Relief Headquarters in Southfield. World Medical Relief is an agency that's been in our community for several years that provides services to the medically needy, the poor, the sick, and they are looking at partnering with a federally qualified health center to provide additional healthcare services or support services to help improve the health and wellness of our community. And so there's a phone number here if you would like to call them and express your concern about things that you would like to see, services that you'd like to see delivered in our community. It's three-one-three-eight-six-six-five-three-three-three. That's World Medical Relief. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that, oh, you did have something, Mr. Madalba? All right, please.
Thank you. Last week, the city hosted a job fair for jobs available in the city of Southfield to come and work here. If you go, if you do not attend that event, you can go to our city's website and check out, all the jobs available there are numerous, and even our Parks and Rec Department is starting to hire for jobs in the summer for camps, lifeguards, things like that, so feel free to take a look. Also, along the same lines of all the wonderful things Parks and Rec has been doing, in February, we had a Winter Fest here last week Sunday, which was very well attended. They had snow tubing for the first time, which was a great addition. I had fun going, going down the slide. It was, it was very nice, it was a great turnout, just looking at all the diversity that showed up for that event was also truly amazing about what our community represents. Another reminder with Ice Arena, that they have added afternoon skate earlier in the day from twelve-thirty to two on Sundays, for those who have smaller children that couldn't make it out at five o'clock, they do have earlier skates, skate time. Continuing with Parks and Rec, this Friday, March first, is the first day that you can reserve picnic shelters for the season, so I know that the line always gets quite long, but hopefully it will be a smooth transition for those who are making their reservations this Friday that starts at eight AM. And last but certainly not least, I also want to thank the public, Department of Public Works. There were several water main breaks the last week or two. I know one was on my street, I got a knock on the door that they may have to shut off my water, but they worked very diligently getting that water main fixed within just a couple hours, and you can't even tell that there was any issues on the street, they cleaned it up really nicely, and they did a great job informing all the residents. So thank you for the, to the Department of Public Works for that. With that, have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Anybody else? I just, the only thing I wanted to do was just remind everyone that we will be having a council retreat this Friday, March first, twelve to four. I will be at Oakland Community College in Rooms A, one-oh-one, one-oh-two, and in that time, we'll be trying to set forth some, well, I guess, two things, look back at the goals that we've set before to see how far we've gotten, and then to move forward to see where we want to continue to go. And I don't know, I guess, since we've mentioned Black History Month here a couple times already today, I think council needs to think about doing, sponsoring something ourselves versus Parks and Rec or something like that. Seems like an odd correlation. I'm glad they're doing it, and I appreciate that they've done, but I think that we have a responsibility in that, too, as well as maybe some other areas as well, and that might be one point of discussion for, for us on Friday. Nonetheless, I just wanted to make that announcement clear and known to everyone that we will be meeting and setting forth some goals for the upcoming year for the council. With that said, it is, of course, it is posted, it will be posted, is it posted, Madam Clerk? Already posted, Al. Yes, ma'am. All right, so that said, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. I just have one announcement tonight, and that is on Monday, March eighteenth, we'll have the annual State of the City address. It'll be held at the Regency Manor on Twelve Mile Road. This is sponsored by the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. It is a ticketed event, it includes lunch. However, we'll also repeat the State of the City on Thursday night that week, I think that's the twenty-first, and it'll be in council chambers at seven PM, and it's open to all, it will also be broadcast over city cable fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate you. Look forward to that report. Administration?
I have no items this evening, sir. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Madam Attorney.
No items this evening, thank you.
Good. Madam Clerk. All right, I see the treasurer wants to speak to us.
I just wanted to give a brief reminder for our residents and taxpayers, our deadline to accept tax payments is February twenty-eighth, which is coming up the end of this week, so please make all your payments, we accept postmarks, we can, we have a twenty-four-hour Dropbox available, as long as it's there by the time we get to work the following business day, we'll accept those payments and market, accept it for February twenty-eighth. And after that, all tax payments will have to go to the Oakland County Treasurer's Office, and we'll be happy to provide our residents with the information for that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowenberg, appreciate that. I don't think we have our planner, assessor, or engineers here as of this evening, no meetings to schedule, no orders to approve. That being said, meetings adjourned.